And let me just let everyone in.
I'm just going to take the camera off for like the next seven minutes.
Okay.
And I will be back on camera when I get home.
Okay.
Okay. Who's that?
Not quite sure. Somebody have. Nope.
I think it's always.
Does somebody have two devices?
Michael, is that you? Are you muted? Okay, you're muted. I don't hear it anymore.
No, me either.
Yeah, alright. Alright. Are we ready, Kristy?
Hi, give me one second.
Okay, I would like to call the Bradley Beach Planning Board Meeting of May 27 to order. Will everyone please rise for our pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
At this time, I would ask that everyone please silence all cell phones and other paging devices. They are distracting to others. If there's a lot of background noise at your location, please move to a quiet area. All participants should keep their devices muted until you're called upon to speak. This will allow for a clear and concise recording of these proceedings. The 48-hour notice as required under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met, as notices regular virtual meeting was emailed on May 10, 2021, published in the Asbury Park Press, The Co-Star, and The CoStar. Copy has been placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and a copy has been filed with the borough clerk. Chair Shuck?
Here.
Mayor Fox?
He nodded his head.
Oh.
Here, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Mulcahy?
Here.
Mr. Gubatose?
Here.
Mr. Rosenthal? I didn't see more. Mr. Jung?
Here.
Mr. Mayner?
Here.
Mr. Marco was excused this evening. Ms. Riley Iarardi?
Yeah, here.
Okay, and Ms. Boko?
Here.
And also present this evening, Mark Hittrich. He is our attorney to the board this evening in place of Monica Kowalski. Jerry Frieda is not with us this evening, but our planner Christine Bell is with us this evening.
Next up is the approval of the meeting minutes. Has everyone have a chance to read the minutes? Are there any corrections or anything to them? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 22, 2021.
Do you want a second?
A second.
Mayor? Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Jung?
Yes.
Mr. Mayner?
Yes.
And Chair Shuck?
Yes. We have no applications under consideration for this evening, so we're going to move on to ordinance 2021-13. With that, did everyone have a chance to review the consistency report by the Avakin Group? Hopefully, everybody read that one and everything. As far as the ordinance 2021-13, basically, from what I could see and read, everything is in the definitions area. The old definitions have been removed, new ones put in place. And they're more, from what I could read, they're more into current times and wording. So does anyone have any questions or something that they would make a recommendation on the wording of the definitions to the mayor and council?
Chairman Shuck, can I just interrupt you for a minute? So this ordinance was actually in the state of New Jersey permitting marijuana for recreational and medicinal use. They provide an ordinance for every municipality to either adopt, to permit it, or prohibit it. So this is the state ordinance that needs to be adopted if you want to permit it or not permit it. So there's really no changes that can be made to this.
Well, like I said, the only change is from what we had previously in our definitions is the only thing that's been forwarded to us.
Right, well, and that's.
And, right. And like it says, which we had in the past, that, you know, let's see, all medical cannabis and/or recreational cannabis businesses are deemed prohibited use within the borough, which is what we originally had also. You know, like I said, the wording on the definitions has changed. Oh, and we have to do this by law, even though we had something written in the books, being that the governor the governor or the state of New Jersey legalized marijuana, we had X amount of days to revisit this and re-impose it again. So am I correct with that, Mr. Gubatose or Larry?
Yes, Phil, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no problem, no problem. Like I said, we already went through this several years ago. And from what I understand, we only have X amount of time to bring it back up and redo it again.
So this enactment is making it consistent with the legislation that was passed by the state of New Jersey and complying with that timeline.
And.
Complying with their definitions. We wanted consistent definition.
Right.
And we'll supersede whatever is in the current ordinance.
Yes.
That's correct. And we have a report from our planner that says that it is not inconsistent with the master plan, so.
Which I believe, did you receive that, Arianna? In your, okay.
It's in a package, yeah.
Yeah, I read it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so not having any further discussion on this, then I'm going to make a motion to move this to the mayor and council as a consistency review.
And Mr. Chairman, I believe that Ms. Kowalski has prepared a
Yes.
resolution consistent with that, with the motion that you're about to make.
So can I have a second?
Second. Actually, I can't.
No, you can't.
Yeah. I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Mulcahy?
Yes.
Mr. Jung?
Yes.
Mr. Mayner?
Yes.
Ms. Iarardi?
Yes.
Ms. Boko?
Yes.
And Chair Shuck?
Yes. Next, we have a presentation discussion from the Bradley Beach Shade Tree Commission. I guess, Mr. Heffleck? Would that be you? Or Larry Bagwell?
That will be Larry Bagwell will give the presentation.
Yeah, great.
And he unmuted, so he is there.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Mr. Bagwell, do you want me to give you permission to share your screen so you can go over the the documents that you sent me, or do you want me to pull it up, or how do you want to handle this?
I have it ready to pull up.
Alright, let me just, I just have to give you.
Yeah, just a quick intro. For those who don't know, George, George has been the chair of the Shade Tree Commission. I guess it's inception last August and worked very diligently to organize it and drive to where they are today. So if you don't know George, this is George, and Larry's on the board also, but George is the chair.
Thank you.
You should be able to share your screen. There you go.
I have it. Terrific. Well, thank you all. I appreciate you giving us some time this evening. And what we really wanted to accomplish tonight is just give you an overview of what the Shade Tree Commission is, what we're doing, how we've gotten involved, some of our activities that we've done already, and some of the things that are coming up. But most importantly is, as the planning board, you are certainly a point of entry to to understanding, you know, when residents want to make changes here within the borough. And, you know, we'd like your assistance at understanding what we're looking for, when it's appropriate to let folks know about the Shade Tree Commission and so forth. But, so we'll talk through the slides as we go through. It's pretty brief, but I think it'll give you an idea about what we're doing. As Ms. Fox said, I believe the borough did have a Shade Tree Commission a number of years ago, but that disbanded a while back, and so it was picked up last year, and George has been heading that up. And several of us have joined him in the effort. George is the chair. Right now, we do have Summer Dever, who is our secretary, Ravi Maravada, who is one of the commission members. Shannon Greenblatt is a vice chair, myself and Kim Baker. And we have been joined at each of our meetings by one of the council leaders, John or Al. So what is our purpose? You know, the above statement here is really our mission statement is to promote and protect public safety and general welfare by providing for the regulations of the planting, maintenance, and removal of trees, shrubs, and other plants within the borough of Bradley Beach. So we've kind of adopted this as our mission statement and as we're trying to move forward. Any? So what do we do? There is actually an ordinance that has been written, you know, by the state, and we have adopted it and we've modified it to become, you know, we have modified it somewhat for our own use within Bradley Beach. And, you know, the purpose of the ordinance is really the prevention of indiscriminate or excessive removal of trees and their canopies. And we are, we will talk about, you know, where the trees are within the town and on residents' properties and the type of impact that we can make on both of all of those areas. So we've set up a process where we do have applications for the residents for removal of trees, both in the planting strips, which are really township property, that's in front of many of the homes here in the borough, as well as trees that are located on private property. We have a review process for those applications, for both the planting of the trees in the planting strips as well as on private property. We've gathered and made available reference materials on the Bradley Beach website to explain the ordinance, as well as provide some educational materials for tree care. We've pulled together with the help of a professional arborist that we have retained for the use within the borough. He's helped us craft some of the materials that we have made available to our residents to help educate them on which types of trees work well within the borough, how to plant the trees properly, how to care for them, as well as how to tell when when trees may be diseased or dying. So those reference materials we've made available on the Bradley Beach website. And we're also committed to holding events to get the word out and to engage the township and borough with other activities like Green Day, Arbor Day, and there'll be many more throughout the year. Any questions so far?
Well, I do have one. You had mentioned as far as reviews. What criteria is being used as far as removing of a tree?
Okay.
Other than disease or something like that, because I see a lot of young ones, you know, being removed.
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, when someone is looking to remove a tree, we do ask them for the reason for the removal. Some of the reasons that we've received is that either trees are either dying or diseased, or they are causing problems with the sidewalk, which obviously has other knock-on effects for the resident as well as the township. Could be very dangerous. And, you know, so there are some, you know, we do give them a chance to explain, you know, what it is or why it is they're looking to remove the trees. And our goal is to help to educate the residents in the benefits of keeping the trees if we can. And in certain cases, during the review of the applications, which we review during our twice monthly meetings, we either determine if the application can move forward as written, or in some cases, we do engage the services of the professional arborist to come in and review the tree to see if he is, you know, what his professional opinion is on whether or not the tree could or should be saved and why. And that's really just helping us limit our exposure to the residents to say, you know, we are making use of a professional arborist in our decision-making process.
Right, well, what about the Main Street one? Because like I said, I've seen especially one in particular right by the Chase Bank across the street from the Beech Plum. There was a fruit-bearing tree, and then all of a sudden, what was it, last year? It was cut down. Yep. And, you know, I've seen people walking by, picking the fruits that were growing on them, you know, and eating them and taking them home. But, you know, made no sense why that tree was cut.
Yeah, and part of our challenge so far, and I'm sure it'll continue to be one going forward, is getting the word out to the residents that there is a commission in place to help us in our preservation of trees and growing plants here within the borough. There are some people that still say they are unaware of the commission, and they just go ahead and do it. But like I said, we've done several things. We've done inserts into the tax, I think it was the sewer bills that we did insert for to get the word out to the residents, and we're also making use of these public events within the borough to help get the word out as well. We had a table on Green Day and we'll continue to sponsor a presence at future events. Any other questions?
I have a question. Hi, Larry. It's Arianna.
Hey, Arianna.
Larry's my next-door neighbor. Just a quick question. This is, I'm coming into this, this is my first planning board meeting, but the application for the removal of trees on private property, is that a new thing that you guys have instituted? Or is that a continuance of something that was already in the ordinance for the borough?
That I don't know. George, do you know, or Al?
Yeah, the ordinance was new. Last year's mayor and council adopted a new ordinance creating the Shade Tree Commission with the ordinances that followed it. So the purpose of that is, it's kind of a balancing act in terms of, we're trying to minimize the indiscriminate cutting down of trees, which, you know, those of us who looked here for a while know has had been happening with also residents' needs. We always look foremost for resident's safety. If any tree is deemed a hazard that comes down and sidewalk issues, as Larry had alluded to, as well as side planting strip stumps that are in place. So yes, this is new as of, I believe, July of last year.
Yes, it is. It is new because the old Shade Tree Commission would only remove or allow the removal of any trees in the planting strip.
Okay, alright, thanks. Thanks, Mitch. Alright, any, Arianna did that answer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Alright, any other questions?
I have none.
Okay, so, you know, part of our, you know, look before you dig, we have a check before you chop slogan for us that we're trying to get around, you know, make it easy to remember. But, you know, for anyone who's looking to remove a tree, we do have, let's call it a schedule that depending on the size of the tree, you know, there are different requirements that we have for tree removal. But the application should be submitted for removal of all trees, both on private property and on the planting strips, except in the case of an emergency where public safety is involved, such as after a major storm or so forth, if a tree is blocking, you know. It's acceptable that the removal take place if it poses a danger to the surrounding residents. We're all looking to have any healthy tree that is being removed to be replaced by a designated number of replacement trees, and that's in a schedule that we do include on the application to inform the residents that if their trees are small in nature, we're really looking to only replace it with one tree. But I think it's between eight and 17 inches. We're looking for two trees to be planted, and if it's over over 17 inches, and that's diameter, what we call diameter at breast height of the tree, that if it's larger than 17 inches, that three trees be replacing. And, you know, you might say, well, you know, why are we doing that? That's a lot of wood that's being taken out. But obviously, in some cases, we do need to replace trees. And, you know, so the multiple trees, you know, obviously, they will take some time to mature, but but they will, you know, eventually add the benefits that we're looking for from the trees, such as water absorption retention, soil retention, and also carbon dioxide production and so forth. And so as it says, saying here, larger trees may take more than one replacement tree, but we do include the measurements and so forth for the residents so that they can see what their exposure is to replacing a tree. And the applicant does have an option to, if they do not wish to have a tree, there is a fee that we do impose that would pay into the trust fund that we have established for future plantings. And we'll talk a little bit about that, about the programs that we have to identify locations for where we could use additional trees and how we make those determinations on where to plant them. It is, there is a $50 application fee for all tree removal applications. As to, you know, those are to help us defray the costs of the use of our professional arborist and when we do send them out to assist with us to determining whether or not the removal of the tree is warranted, or if there are alternatives available to the resident for saving that tree. We also make provisions for dangerous trees and branches to be removed without a permit, you know, as I talked about before. Stump removal, we are looking to make sure that in the case of tree removals, that stumps do in fact get removed and below grade and backfilled, another requirement of the tree removal. Are there any questions?
On the stump removal, what's the timeframe from when it's cut that the stump is being removed? Do you guys have a rough idea?
George, I think we've asked them to, is it 60 or 90 days for stump removal?
Chairman Shuck, it's actually very vague in the existing ordinance, but we're going to propose, that's an excellent question. We're going to propose that we strengthen the ordinance wording so that ideally the stump is taken out the day that the tree is taken down for the obvious reasons. We don't have a trip hazard there, but we're going to request that within 60 days a stump be removed on the outside.
Okay, I was just wondering. That's good.
Yeah, and we are creating a process whereby, you know, after the applications are approved and the tree removal is actually done, that we will actually do an inspection and, you know, and see if there's any need for any incentives for the resident to complete the stump removal.
Alright, good. Very good.
Excuse me, Larry or George, can you speak a little bit more about the trust fund? What the purpose is and where you see for future plantings? Can you explain a scenario where you might invoke the trust fund for payments?
George, you want to handle that?
The trust fund has existed for a very long time.
George, your audio is breaking up pretty badly.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Is this better?
Yes.
That is better.
Okay, sorry about that. My act has been acting up. So the trust fund has been in existence for a while. The previous committee had this trust fund created, so it's been around for a long time. The purpose of the trust fund is the application fees. If somebody would rather give an assessment instead of a replant, the money goes in there, and very specifically, it is going to be for the future planting of trees. Where we've decided to concentrate on for practical purposes right now is ideally to start replanting some planting strips. As you know, there's just certain areas of town with no trees in the planting strips. As Larry had mentioned earlier, we've developed a very detailed tree list with our arborists, so one of the problems we have in town is certain planting strips are very narrow. We've made allowance with that, and we purposely picked certain species of trees that will do well in a narrow planting strip. And the parts of town that have the very wide planting strips, we'd like to see the classic large trees there for the canopy effect that certain streets still have in Bradley. So the money in the trust will be going forward to planting trees very specifically. We have one program we just started, an honorary program where for $350, someone can dedicate a tree in memory of a loved one or for whatever reason, and we will plant that tree in appropriate planting strip around town. The $350 will not cover the full amount of the tree, so this is where the trust fund starts to come into place. There's other programs we're formulating, and that also will be used, the trust fund money will be used to, again, replant the planting strips in Bradley. Okay, okay, that's helpful enough. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. In the planting strip, we have the cable company, electric company on the poles and stuff like that. Are you going to be looking as to where to plant them so that when they do grow, we don't have the electric company coming by and just to plant them so that when they do grow, we don't have the electric company coming by and just chopping the trees into a you know, a Y?
Yes, yes, on the, on the recommended tree list that we have attached to the Borough website, there, there are different types of trees based on the characteristics that the, that we'd like to see the residents plant, you know, using in order to plant the tree. So, there are, there are species of trees that would be specific for under wires because they're not going to grow past the wires that are hanging above the, above the planted strips.
Okay.
And, and, you know, and so there's, so there's certain types, and also depending on the width of the planting strip itself, we have some planting strip widths that are less than eighteen inches, but some planting strip widths go up to three and four feet, which is obviously larger trees would be acceptable as long as, again, there's no over, there's, there's no wiring overhead.
Okay, oh, that, that's good, that's good that you're taking that into consideration.
We've also established the relationships with the two utility companies and with Monmouth County. As you know, Monmouth County has a few of our streets, and they come in and will take care of trees on those streets. So, we have reached out to them, and they do now come to us before they just take, cut down a tree or make that big Y as you alluded to. So, hopefully going forward, there'll be more consideration of their trimming.
Oh, good, good, now, main concern, Main Street.
Yes.
What, we, you have two different things that's going to be, that I want to find out what's going to happen. One is the height of a tree and blocking the signs of the businesses, and the other one, again, utility, which, you know, you said you're going to be planting certain ones. What about the, what type of trees would you be planting on Main Street?
Excellent question, we first, when the commission first formed, we thought our focus was going to be Main Street first because, as you know, many residents are concerned about the amount of missing trees that are in those wells. We've come to a kind of an impasse, and I don't know if maybe Mayor Fox could add to this, we're not sure what the plan is for Main Street, so we're kind of stuck with, with doing any plantings until we're sure what the master plan for our Main Street is. If pavers are going to remain there, if things are going to be changed. You're right, Chairman Chuck, that wells maybe should be moved so that they're not blocking residents, rather businesses' signs, there are a lot of considerations to take into place. So, we've been kind of on hold till we know from Mayor and Council what their thoughts are, what their master plan is for Main Street. And Mayor Fox, I'm not sure if we have a plan yet.
Well, we, we, we're kind of taking it in increments, we had a street state grant that we applied for, but unfortunately, we did not get, we just got that news in the last few weeks. There were a tremendous amount of municipalities that bid on this grant money, and we just weren't successful. Paul Gavin, who's kind of the strategic, she's not kind of, she's the strategic planning lead, has asked for a meeting of myself and a few others to talk about next steps relative to the Main Street strategy, given the fact that that, that streetscape was denied, and it was for about a four or five block area, and we were kind of trying to do it in increments. So, we'll, certainly, George, we'll dial this into that strategy and say, how, you know, do we, do we proceed on the, on the shade tree portion of what we want to do? Or how do we index through it? So, we are trying to get that meeting in the next couple of weeks, so I'll get back with you as to how that stands at this point, but I will dial that into the dialogue, so I appreciate that question.
So, we, as George mentioned, we have been thinking about Main Street, but we've, obviously, there's a, there are a lot of other opportunities to plant throughout the borough, so it hasn't held us up, but we are certainly looking to make sure that we make the right decisions once we know what the plans are for Main Street.
Yeah, yeah, and we're not going to, just one last point, you know, just because we did not get this grant, you know, there's a, our town engineer Jerry Fried also commented back to Paul that let's, let's develop some alternate plans and maybe there's some things we can do, go and get a loan, we were trying to get funding, but you gotta believe too that there's going to be a tremendous amount of infrastructure money coming the next few years if these bills get passed. So, we've hired a grants manager to help us navigate through that, so we're going to be looking to exploit that as much as possible.
Okay, good.
Okay. So, so moving on, just talking about tree planting, you know, once an application must be submitted to plant a tree in the planting strip, not, not, but not on private property. And, you know, it's because, obviously, it's township, the, the strips are actually township property, and we, so we do want to make sure that we're making the right, that the residents are making the right decisions and alerting us to those plantings when they are planting for them. However, there's no such, no fees required for, for plantings, just for, just for the removals. Trees in the planting strip must be from the approved tree list. We can't help them, we can advise them on trees that would, would work out, work better on the private property, on their private property. But however, in the, in the, in the planting strip, we are recommending, and they do need, the trees that are chosen should be from the, from the approved tree list. And, and like I said, there is a recommendation for lists for, again, it's just based on, based on our climate, the wind, the closeness to the beach and the salt water, that, you know, we have a recommendation of trees that, that fare better in those types of climates. Any questions here?
I have a clarifying question, so the planting strip you just said is owned by the town, correct?
Yes.
And then, if there's a tree that is impacting the sidewalk, as a resident, I'm responsible for that sidewalk, even though something that's on land that I don't own is causing disruption?
You hit the abscess in the tooth there, Kelly.
It's my specialty, so get used to it.
And, and we have had several situations where we have had to turn the township to, you know, for clarification and so forth, but in many cases, you know, the, the damage to the sidewalk, you know, that is typically, we look for the residents to, to, to take on that maintenance. And one of the things that we are doing is, and we've been successful with so far, is we have given some advice on alternate ways to modify the sidewalk around the trees so that we can in fact save the tree, and we find that some of the people are very receptive to, to that approach. But, but certainly, we do need to pay attention, like I said, there are a number of applications that have come in that have said that the reason why they're looking to remove the trees is because of damage that the existing tree is doing to the sidewalk. Some cases, removal of the tree is going to be necessary, in some cases, it may not, maybe just looking, looking at the solution in a different way.
And then, in that case, if the tree has to be removed, you know, for an appropriate reason, who's the responsible party, the homeowner? And is there a program, like is that part of the trust fund to help pay for that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whoa, 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 clarify that answer, please.
The homeowner's responsible, but I don't believe, based on the removal, George, right?
That's correct.
Correct, now, the homeowner is responsible for it, and also with sidewalk issues as we discussed. On county roads, the county currently will take care of a planting strip tree for a homeowner. There's a little caveat there for people live on Brindley and the other county roads.
Yeah, we like terrorists, George.
Otherwise, it is the responsibility of the homeowner.
And Kelly, by the way, your last two questions are really good ones because it's one of the challenges, I think, we as a borough have faced historically and probably need to continue to, to think through. This, it really does have to do with the shade tree commission, but rather, the borough, for time eternal, has always said homeowners are responsible to maintain their planting strips, maintain the trees, maintain the sidewalk, even though it's borough property. And basically, that factors into our tax base, so if the borough wants to take over that responsibility, the odds are our taxes would have to increase in order to cover those additional services. So, this is something that's existed for many, many years, and I know the mayor, and I have at least chatted about this on a couple of occasions, not sure if that's the way it should be in the future, but, but just for the record, it's not really something that the shade tree, I would say the shade tree commission has to kind of work around that and try to appease homeowners and work with the homeowners, but that is not part of the, their ordinance, that is something that the town has decided. Yeah, so we're going to continue to work this problem, it's a problem, you know, particularly because of the age of some of the trees in town and the life cycle. So, it's not something we don't recognize, it's something we just don't have a good solve for right now. We're continuing to discuss it, and, you know, hopefully we'll come up with a path forward, but otherwise, we're proceeding as, as has been in the past. Okay. Very good. So, now's the, now's the important part, what do we need from, what are we looking for from you? Since in many cases, before homeowners take action in, on their property, they're, they sometimes do need to come before the planning board in, in order to get their, get their plans approved. And so, you know, you guys could assist us in just making sure that the homeowners are aware that we do in fact have a shade tree ordinance, and get them familiar, you know, encourage them to get familiar with it.
Okay.
Excuse me. So, and especially if they're planning for a major renovation, teardown, or the like, that would be very helpful, that would be the right time to let them know.
Okay. Well noted.
So, submitting, excuse me. So, and again, just encouraging them to make sure that they are submitting their applications.
Have a drink of water, take a break, take a, take a minute.
Okay, here we go, we're getting better at this. So, for new construction, also to push for the maximum planting of trees, both on the property and in the planting strip. You know, so timing is everything.
Right, and just to let you know, as on the planning board, when a, take for instance, the projects across the street on Second and Main Street, or Third and Main Street, it was requested that they put some trees in the planting strip on the side street and on Main Street, like we did on three, let's see, one Main Street. There was a, an issue over there, and I think we had them plant four or five trees on Main Street.
Right.
A couple on the side streets, so any application that basically comes before the planning board, we do request that they put trees up.
Right.
So, type of trees, we always left it in the past to the, you know, to the engineer to decide what would be fit best there, but now we're going to make the recommendation that they get in touch with the shade tree commission.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, so, also to, to keep in mind, property is being transferred, or a zoning permit is being applied for, you know, the planting strip should be restored to natural grass, that is, that is a current part of our, our ordinance. Any sidewalk deflections or, you know, need to be repaired, it should become a part of the CO checklist, just to make sure that there's, there's, there's no stumps that are present that could cause dangers, and so forth. So, again, it's just an awareness for the planning board, for the building, for the building department and so forth, so that, you know, they can help us get the word out and make sure that our residents are taking care when they're, when they're making these decisions about trees on their property. Just like I mentioned earlier, we have created a process, and this, this process is located on the, on the town, the Borough website. So, it's, it's if you are, you know, what is the tree location? And it's either on private property or in planting strips, and what is being done for the tree removal, or, or one of these site demolitions, or additions, planting or removals or maintenance. The decisions that are, that, that need to be made for this process depend on, on these, these questions that, that should be being asked, both by us as well as by the resident. You know, in some cases, permits are required, and sometimes they are not, but, you know, this, this, this process chart is a guide to help them understand when they do need to go over a permit and when it's not necessary. But, any, any questions on, on the process?
I have none.
Well, we've, we've reached the end of the show. And the, now, we do have, just to, to let you know that, that there are some plans that we have, as George alluded to, there are a couple of programs which we are in the process of developing. One's called an Honor Me program where residents will be able to, well, excuse me, applicants can apply for an Honor Me tree, and they can, you know, pay us a fee, and, and we will, we will plant a tree for them, and we're work, this is a new program that we're just working on, so we're working some kinks out of it. But, but we do expect that once someone is ready to, to go forward with an Honor Me tree, we will be choosing a location for that tree based on, and a list of, of areas that are in need of trees, or for another one of our programs, which we are, again, in the process of, of moving that forward, it's a wishing tree that if someone wishes to have a tree on their property, that we, we would know that there is, this is, excuse me, in the planting strip, that we would, we would put that, we would put that request on a, on our list of places to plant a tree, either, you know, when someone wants to establish an Honor Me tree, or if, if there is money in the, in the trust that we deem that we, we need to put a tree somewhere. So, those are programs that are in, in process. We also have, we also have a, are in the process of applying for a grant to help us to pay for a part of the expenses to do a proper tree inventory throughout the borough. And, and when, once we do that, it's really just to us get a, get a just a base inventory of where we are with trees within the borough, as we look at the planting strips on all the blocks, and all of the open, the open planting, open tree area, open space areas, so that we can decide, you know, where we should be planting additional trees in the future, and also identifying either diseased or dying trees that may need replacement, you know, in the, in the near future, like we're already aware of. And George, help me if I'm wrong, it's, is it the pear trees that are, no, not, it's the ash trees that are, the ash trees that are by, by the lake. Those are, there's a disease that's Um those are, uh there's a disease that's um uh that has spread to some of those trees. And they'll eventually all need to be replaced and uh so.
Which lake?
Um George, is that Fletcher or?
Uh unfortunately, both lakes and a lot of the Second Avenue Park were planted with all ash trees uh. Uh around twenty years ago, and some you can already see the problem, but they're they're all infected ash gore. Or I believe is the name of the the pest, and uh. So over time, I've already spoken to Biagio about this, over time, we're gonna have to unfortunately. Uh replace those trees with the proper trees, this is not a a good area for ash. Uh so we're gonna go with more native trees that should be planted there, so it's a, it's gonna be a pretty big work in progress over the next few years.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Uh any questions from the uh board? Uh seeing none, I'm gonna open it up to the public since we do have uh an individual out there, a resident. Rich Despin, Rich, do you have any questions uh to Larry?
It may not be a question, but we just went through an experience the last two years. Number one, we lost a huge.
So so do you wanna make a comment, I'll just, I'll swear you on it.
Okay.
Just state your address, please.
Rich Despin, six hundred third avenue.
Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, tonight's proceeding?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me for not having video, I've got a ongoing problem, chronic problem with that. Anyway, we had to take down a very huge oak tree uh last year, um reluctantly. It was leaning toward the house, and I noticed, looking at pictures. That lean increased over the time we've been here for eight years, and it now, it was about fifteen degrees and we just felt threatened. We had to remove it, and then we had to remove two other trees that blew down in the storm last year. So there was a lot of expense for us in that area, then. We found that we had to do something with our sidewalk, and the bill came into pretty close to ten K, and I write down the number. Uh that that's a huge expense for us, uh we miss trees a lot. And if there's any way that you can get uh an open space that you wanna plant some trees, uh we're all for it.
Well, if if I'm not mistaken, Rich, Larry did mention that there's a wish list.
Yes.
And maybe you could be put on that wish list.
Um I tried to get on the memorial ones, but I was told no, that had the only one, and I didn't bother with it anymore. Uh while I've got the mic, if I if I'm off base in my comment here, just tell me and I'll shut up. Um I had mentioned at a uh a council meeting, the concern of. The expenditure for people who can't afford to replace the sidewalk, that there should be some sort of a program. Um uh to to help people, and because we made our sidewalks safe, and I'd like to walk on safe sidewalks. And I don't wanna have to trip over one because it wasn't taken care of.
Yeah.
Uh I found out that Freehold had this issue, and what they did is they came up with a program that the town picked up. Half the cost of replacing the sidewalks, and it was overwhelmingly accepted, and a lot of people took advantage of that, so just something. Um um to consider looking to the future.
Well, I'll be honest, Rich, uh maybe you should bring that uh to the mayor and council. Seriously, do do you have any uh a copy of what they did, uh? You know, uh maybe a a memo or a referendum that they had written up or something?
I don't, but I'll be very happy to uh look that up and uh forward it to them.
Yeah, there you go, and maybe uh they could look into it and see, maybe they could help uh some of these homeowners with their sidewalks. Uh okay, uh there's no one else out there, it, the board have any questions of Larry or George? No, uh.
No. Good job, Larry.
Said, uh we're here to help in any way that we could as far as uh, you know. The planning board in enforcing and requesting that trees be planted in a planting strip or or wherever. You know, on uh someone's property, so uh like I said, that message will be forwarded. Uh every time we have an application in front of us. And uh I'm gonna be talking with the uh chair on the uh Board of Adjustment. And uh you know, hopefully they would make the same recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, George and Larry.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh let's see, anything else, there's really nothing else on the agenda, so uh. Uh our next scheduled uh meeting is June twenty fourth at six thirty. Uh with that being said, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Your meaner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody, and uh have a happy uh happy and Memorial Day.
They're starting the same.
It's gonna be eighty degrees and sunny all weekend, so no problem.
Yes.
Where are you going to extreme sad?
Yeah, everybody, everybody thinks eighty degrees and sunny, everybody.
Yes.
Tonight, everyone. All right, see y'all.
Bye, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.